All right, Linda, let us know when you're on.
It's coming across the internet right now.
Yeah, I think so. I was hoping that I could actually see people's faces from the commissioners on here, so. But then I guess I can't speak. I have to turn my volume low.
So if you are at the dais, please mute, because you'll be using your speaker instead. And you can share the video. You will see the, we're just highlighting right there.
Okay, well, if I can see everybody up there, I guess that's okay. When they're speaking, okay, then I'll cancel. No. Okay, okay, yeah. And for our commissioners who are remote, if you are able to show your video, that is one of the requirements of the remote participation. And Linda, I know, we'll have to talk with you about that separately. Hi Debbie, nice to see your face. You can if you'd like to, I guess, but you don't need to, because it's in the room, and that might be confusing to folks. All right, is everyone ready? Okay, I'm gonna start the recording and then we can go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to call the order. The City of Sebastopol County Commission Meeting of March 28th, 2023. First item is roll call.
Commissioner Ottinger, present. Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
And Commissioner Burns.
Here.
Vice Chair Fritz.
Here.
And Chair Fernandez.
Here.
And I will note for the record that Commissioner Burns and Kelly are joining remotely, consistent with AB 2449.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, moving on, item number two, comments from the public on items not on the agenda. If anybody's wishing to make a comment, please raise your hand, literally or figuratively.
I do not see any, and we have not received any from the public for items not on the agenda.
Okay, good, thank you. Item number three, statements of conflict of interest. If any commissioners have any conflict of interest with the, any items on the agenda. Okay, we don't see any. And so we're going to approval minutes of October 25th, 2022. Does anyone have any changes, additions, questions on that?
All good.
Okay. In that case, looking for a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, the motion is second to approve minutes. If there's no further discussion, go ahead and call for the vote.
Sure, Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Commissioner Burns.
Yes.
Commissioner Ottinger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fritz.
Yes.
And Chair Fernandez.
Yes.
Okay, those minutes are approved. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, moving on to item 5A on the agenda.
Thank you. So 5A is a variance request for 771 and 773 First Street. A variance to the creek setback, and due to a noticing error, this will actually, we're asking that this be continued to the April 11th Planning Commission meeting, which is our next Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, do we need, you want us to make a motion on that, or?
You can just say so, continue.
Okay, we'll continue it to that date. Thank you.
And we are re-noticing with the newspaper, which was cracked, and the mailed notice, everything.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 5B, 6770 McKinley Street, Head West Barlow, conditional use permit amendment.
Thank you. The Head West Marketplace is applying to amend their temporary use permit for the second Saturday and Sunday of the month from March to December of 2023, and in, including May through December of '23 to '24. Head West Marketplace will take place on privately owned portions of McKinley and McKinley Street and Peak Lady Court. The request also includes a alcohol use permit. The Barlow and the Head West group are planning on partnering with a local nonprofit for the sale and distribution of that alcohol for the event. I do want to make note that a couple of recommendations for, from staff for the Planning Commission is that live music would be allowed as a part of this use permit, but is also subject to the noise ordinance, and that no sound may emanate from the property, which causes a disturbance of more than 50 feet from the event site. The hours of operation for the Head West Marketplace are from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM on the Saturdays and Sundays, and Head West roughly brings in about 500 patrons per day on those events. The marketplace also takes care of parking with vocations on McKinley Street and Peak Lady Court, and then as well as 385 Morris Street, which is used for overflow parking and can accommodate up to 150 vehicles. Temporary signage will be installed at least 24 hours prior to the event, and any vehicles that are not removed are towed off-site by no later than setup time through the event. And the alcohol use permit portion of the request will be subject to standard conditions related to alcohol use permits and are included in the conditions of approval. And with that, I will end my staff report and answer any questions that the commission may have, and I do know, I do see the applicants, Yolanda and Jimmy are here to answer any questions when they are called upon.
Okay, well, we'll start with questions of staff from commissioners. Okay, go ahead, Paul.
I do have my hand raised really quick. It's not a question, but if it's possible, could I have the camera on the person who's speaking so I can see their lips, if at all possible? I think I got what you said, John. Well, you're done talking now, but just if you give it, I think, I mean, I read it, so I'm okay with everything you said, so just, just saying if it's possible.
So I guess I had a question about, you just brought up the, the noise ordinance and the disturbance 50 feet. So I guess I'd just like a clarification on what is a disturbance, and how is this different from just the noise ordinance? Like, can we just say, you know, the noise ordinance has to be observed? I'm just wondering what the 50-foot disturbance criteria would be?
Okay, so normally what we what we have for projects or sites that have music is that the sound can't be heard more than 50 feet from the site. If you recall, the Smokehouse BBQ, 50 feet across the street is therefore across the street. And so the staff's intent is that this would be beyond the Barlow site, knowing that the music is in the center of the site, it shouldn't be going beyond Laguna Parkway to the neighborhood to the north. Given its location, it has plenty of space to, to not cause a disturbance. And so that's the standard condition, the 50 feet beyond the property line. In this case, the Barlow has a number of properties, so just beyond the Barlow properties, I think, is fine.
So I guess I'm just still trying to understand, like, what qualifies a disturbance? Like, if someone can hear something going on, can they call the police department to say, "I can hear something, and that's a disturbance, and I don't want to hear it"?
That is the noise, yes, and that's generally what would be consistent with the noise ordinance as well.
Okay, so like when I'm at home and I can hear Hot Monk on the weekend, are they out of compliance with their noise ordinance?
And we are working with them to gain compliance.
Okay. Okay. So I have a series of questions about specific conditions. I'm just wondering if I should ask them now, or if that should be part of the discussion?
So you may want to hold that. I do know that the applicant has requested some changes as well, and I, I'm hoping they can, I'm hoping they can go over that as part of their presentation, and then that will help probably on some of those, and that may inform the commission's questions.
Okay.
I have a question about noise ordinance. Should I wait, or do you want?
Yeah. Be on a second. Well, yeah, I'll, I'll call on you next, and then.
Okay, no, I just was, that's what we were talking about, if you wanted to.
Yep.
So then again, I have a question about Exhibit C, the standard conditions of approval. And I know I always kind of bring some things up about this, but the way I understand the standard conditions of approval, they're typically for construction projects. I mean, almost all of the conditions have to relate to construction projects, and I don't, you know, this is not a construction project, it's a event, and so I feel like really they don't apply to the, to this specific application. Does staff have a position on that specifically?
Yeah, I think the intent behind the standard conditions of approval was that they would be applied to all entitlement projects, whether they're temporary use permits or actual instruction projects.
Okay, I think that might be something that we should maybe discuss at some point, because it just sort of seems like a lot of paperwork for something that is really kind of irrelevant to a use permit for an event, I guess. And we don't talk about that now, I guess, just maybe think about that in the future. I think it's all my staff questions for now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Debbie, you're up.
I was just curious, along with the noise ordinance, since this is something that has already been happening, have there been complaints? And have, have there been any changes, or, or is there something in the works right now? Because I know we've had complaints about other music downtown, but this has been going on for at least the last year or two, so I was just wondering if there have been any complaints.
Sure, that we have not had any complaints from the Head West event, and I believe the applicant, Jimmy and Yolanda can probably speak to the level of music is quite reasonable for this, so I don't foresee an issue with this particular condition. I do know we have had complaints about the Peace Town in the Barlow going beyond, and so that, that's a, that's a different event, yes, yes, and some other, yes, exactly. It's not in the Barlow, like the Hot Monk just just mentioned, and the Smokehouse BBQ that the commission previously reviewed.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Any other commissioners? I do have some, a couple of questions myself. So, noise ordinance also. I don't have it in front of me, but isn't it certain hours where it exceeds the noise level? Because it's gonna be from 11:00 in the morning till 5:00 PM.
Right, so that 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Saturday or Sunday, or any day actually, is during the daytime hours, so there are still limits. And I believe that is 55 decibels at the property line. Generally, 55 decibels at the property line is not going to be a disturbance 50 feet away.
Okay.
That's the, that's where that kind of shorthand comes from, and the reason for that is that it's really difficult to do the calibrations that our noise ordinance does require, because it requires background noise measurements and traffic and all sorts of things like that. It, when you're just trying to make sure that the sound that's coming from the event isn't too loud, so to speak, then it's a lot easier to just give it a distance limit, and then, you know, if, if police are called out, it's easy for them to say, "Well, I'm 50 feet away, and I can hear it, so you need to turn it down."
And, you know, I'm just a little confused as well as to why that, the 50 feet is even mentioned on there, rather than just say to follow the noise ordinance.
Because the noise ordinance would require the actual measurements be taken, and again, that's specialized police with specialized equipment, did not just an officer coming out and saying, "Yeah, I'm 50 feet away, please turn it down a little bit."
Okay. Also, for the Peace Town event, we did, one of the requirements was that, that they had an attendant to keep people from parking at the theater parking lot, and I'm just wondering if that is something that was, that has been discussed for this event, or, or if I missed it on here somewhere.
Yeah, I believe it is condition number three in Exhibit B. A professional security firm shall be present and provide a minimum of one parking guard to ensure public, the public does not park in the Rialto parking lot, which is 6868 McKinley Street during the event.
What, what page is that? Sorry, Exhibit B 3. Okay, here we go. Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure. So is that, are we saying that that guard needs to be stationed there, or is it just one to prevent them? I mean, I, because before, I think we, we asked for someone to be stationed there, and that's how you patrol otherwise.
Yeah, so it would be stationed there and present to make sure that people parking in that lot are not for the event, and actually for the Rialto or whatever other parking spaces are being used.
Got it. Yeah, because I want to make sure it was related to that, because it could be interpreted that is provided for the event and on top of that. Okay. Any other commissioner questions? I'm good with that. Yes, Linda?
Yes. Do we need to add in the conditions, the typical one about recycling? I know it ends early, but, you know. Seems like that's usually been our standard. The hours per recycling.
Oh, you're talking about like noise?
The bottle dumping stuff, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, that one.
I don't think that's necessary, because the hours are 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and so I would imagine they would not be dumping bottles after 9:00 PM, which is, I believe, our requirement. And we can, we can certainly ask Yolanda and Jimmy to confirm that, but I don't, I just don't see where that would be an issue, given the event hours.
And then my second question around music. Is, is where the music going to be, the venue or the couple of places, is that changed from how it was this last year? The different location?
I'm not sure, but I would defer to the applicant to answer those questions.
Will do, thanks.
Okay, thank you, and like to ask applicant. Yolanda, go ahead, if you guys want to make a presentation or make any comments.
Thank you. My name is Yolanda. I'm the operations director at the Barlow. We're really excited to apply for a use permit for the Head West Marketplace. Jimmy, who is the founder of the Head West Marketplace, is on the line, but I'll go ahead and do the presentation. If there's something that I can't answer, then he'll be available to help with that. We partnered with Head West. We're already in our third year together, and we think it's been a really great addition to Sebastopol. It's been voted the best maker event by the Bohemians Best of the North Bay Awards for all three years. And it's, we think that the partnership's going well. We think it's been well-received by the public. Our use permit expired in December, and are, we applied for a two-time use permit for March and April. March unfortunately got canceled due to the, the heavy rain, but we are geared up to get started in the next couple of weeks for our first Head West of the year. And this use permit, we're going through this process to get approval through the end of 2024. You know, for the past decade, we've been hosting events in the same footprint along McKinley Street, closing the street from Morris Street down to the former California Sister Space at 6790 McKinley Street. And it was really always intentions to be a public gathering space and, and a place where markets could be held. And we've tried multiple things throughout the last decade, but this definitely has been one of our favorite things and one of the best received. We're really just hoping to, to continue doing what we're doing and bringing more people to the table and giving more people opportunity. We noticed that there were a couple of conditions of approval. I did send off an email earlier today, and I apologize if that went to any of the wrong people or on the wrong email addresses, but we did have a couple of concerns about a few of those, and we're, we're hoping that those could be considered tonight and perhaps modified. And I don't know if right now is the time to, to do that, but I would love to answer any questions you have, and maybe you can let me know when you'd like me to, to go over those items.
Yeah, you can, you can do that now.
Okay, thank you. Let me pull them up here. Okay, so in one area, there was, it was more, this first one's more of a clarification, written in the text of the agenda, and I believe the conditions of approval. It mentions that the event starts, it runs from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and that is the case during some months, but once we, once it starts to get dark a little earlier, the event does run sooner. So starting in November, from November and December, the event actually does run from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, which was listed in the original application. So we just want to be certain that for those two months that we'd be able to operate from, at those revised hours, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Item number three mentions having a professional security guard, security firm being present to provide, to ensure that Head West customers, or excuse me, rather, what I like for it to, to word is to have one parking guard ensure that Head West customers do not park in the private parking spaces at the Rialto Cinema during the event hours. I feel the way that it's currently worded is a little bit broad and a little bit confusing. The Rialto Cinema, the parking next to the Rialto, a good portion of it is actually public parking, and it's confusing, I think, for most people, because it's not really labeled very well, what portions are private and what portions are public. And I know that last year during the event, we also had a couple of issues with the parking guard feeling like they were responsible for monitoring the parking lot for Rialto for everyone in Sebastopol. There were a lot of people coming, and they weren't patrons of the Barlow, nor were they there for Head West. They were parking there to shop elsewhere in Sebastopol, and so we're really hoping that we can have a little more clarity on the responsibilities there, and perhaps change the language to, to say that we will have one security guard stationed there to monitor the private parking spaces at the Rialto, ensuring that there are no Head West or Barlow customers, rather than leaving it so broad. The next item, we were hoping that could be modified. There is a section under item number nine that mentions that the planning director has the authority to modify the hours of operation for the event, which is a little bit of a concern. I, I would hope that we would never get to a point where that would be necessary, but we have been doing this now for three years, and for all three years, the hours have been consistent. They've been 11 to 5 or 10 to 4. If we had to change those hours, I think it would dramatically increase the vibe, or, you know, change the viability of the event. These are really the only hours that, that this can reasonably happen with daylight hours and, and the required setup time, so we're hoping that they're you know, based on the fact that this has been established for several years, that would be a, a difficult position to put us in if the hours had to suddenly become modified. The next item is number 12. There is currently a requirement in the, or a condition of approval that limits us with our marketing, and it says that targeted marketing has to be geographically limited to Sonoma and Marin Counties. We're not quite sure what the actual intention of that condition is, but as the Barlow, you know, we do have a lot of local traffic, we have regional traffic, and we have national traffic. We believe that Sebastopol should be a very inclusive place where people aren't told to stay out, and we also are very concerned that that creates a big lack of diversity by closing out a lot of our other neighboring counties. So again, we don't understand necessarily the intention, and we'd love to hear more, but we do feel like to have that as a condition of approval doesn't necessarily line up with our core values. Item number 14, these are also about parking, so a kind of similar to item number three. You know, us being responsible for monitoring the parking. We'd, again, love some clarification on what we'd be responsible for, and hoping that we're responsible for the, you know, ensuring the private portion of the parking lot isn't parked in, and furthermore, I'd really love to continue working with the city or whoever makes the final decision to see if not only the Rialto, the public parking near Rialto, but also the CVS, if they could be striped so that people know that it's public parking. So again, just looking for a little clarity on the item 14, and perhaps a little bit of modification to the way it's worded. And then, item number 19 was similar to, you know, the planning director's authority to modify the hours of operation. Item number 19 states that if there becomes an issue with traffic that the planning director can require that we have a traffic monitor to allow traffic to run through the event. And I, I'm sure everyone's here at least visited Head West Marketplace once, or one of the events at the Barlow, but that just seems like it would really be, certainly not provide a pleasant experience for customers or vendors, and perhaps even problematic or, or unsafe, and so we would, again, hope that the fact we've been running events in this footprint for over a decade, and that this particular event has been hosted for three years now, we would hope that that condition could be removed. That, those are, those are, those are our notes, but I'd love to answer any questions that anyone has about our application or about those modification requests.
Okay, thank you, Yolanda. So questions of the applicant, and Deborah, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, okay, let's see, I was taking notes here, so let me go back to, I have a couple of, so the parking, it's my understanding, you know, just, just being down there and seeing kind of the flow of parking during these events, I am concerned also with the application for a new hotel, and, you know, parking for that hotel as well. How do you see this? You know, we've talked a lot in the past, so I won't be redundant about the speeding up and down Morris Street and people crossing from the Rock Quarry over, and it is, you know, kind of quite chaotic right now, so we talked about solutions for that in the past. I don't know where you're at with that, and where you plan on having all the overflow parking for this, because the last Head West you had, I did sit down there and just kind of look at the traffic flow and stayed for quite a long time to see, and it was, it was pretty packed. I mean, it's a very successful event, and people love it. So, you know, my first question would be parking, and how do you see managing that?
So currently, we would just plan to continue using the parking lot at 385 Morris Street, which is the former batch plant. We can accommodate about 150 vehicles there, and then, you know, the rest throughout the Barlow. We are wanting to do a hotel project. The last time we did meet, we were talking about more of a permanent parking structure. Our initial plan that we went in with was to have a parking garage, and I know that that had some concerns, or a lot of concerns around that, so we went back to the drawing board, and we actually planned for a stacked valet parking lot that would be monitored as a port, as a part of the hotel approval, and so at that point, with it being stacked, I believe the vehicle count that could, could be accommodated there was about 328, if I remember right. That project is, is substantially ahead of us, so we're, we're not quite there, so for the purposes of this application, we would just be continuing to utilize the 385 Morris for about 150 vehicles.
And that is the And that is the same parking lot that you are proposing to do a stack just for for future? Is that correct?
Yeah, and and when I say stacked, I don't mean multi-level, but just valet, you know.
Okay, and you're right, we don't need to talk about that, just curiosity. It does seem like with the success of this, though, it it, I don't even know that the hundred and fifty cars at this point. You know, I think looking at parking infrastructure is one of my biggest concerns, along with safety, crossing the street there. So we had talked about some safety issues in the past. Has there been anything that has been proposed? Or we've thought about to like prevent people from, I mean, cars speeding down Morris and then jaywalking across? Is there going to be a crosswalk there or anything?
Not as part of this application, certainly as part of the formal application.
Okay, gotcha. And then you had mentioned, you know, when, from my understanding, the participants or the artisans who come to sell at at this are from all over and very diverse as well, right? It's not local sellers with the outreach to bringing people from all over to buy wares. You can be from anywhere and sell your wares there. Is that correct?
I I believe, and Jimmy can correct me if I'm wrong, but applications are primarily focused in Sonoma Marin, but they do also extend out to include the the Bay Area and, you know, Alameda and Oakland, Richmond, San Francisco. So, you know, I I he might know a little bit more about a little more specifics. But I do know that there's been a conscious effort not to only open it up to Sonoma and Marin specifically because we are, we don't want to come off as exclusive or, you know, not including some of these counties that have more racial diversity.
So I'm I'm not talking about the invitation of the people who come, I'm talking about the people who are selling. So all towns are exclusive from that area, right? You can't just come to Sebastopol and set up shop on the street. It's only, you know, stores in Sebastopol. So, you know, one of the concerns I hear all the time in downtown is the separation between the Barlow. And I was going to reach out to you about this, Yolanda, the separation between the Barlow and downtown. How do we bridge that and how do we help this be successful for the whole town? So, you know, I'm wondering if you guys have, you know, I think you guys have done a fantastic job on marketing and I think you've really done great at driving people to the Barlow. And I get it, you are the Barlow, but at the same time, you know, the town is kind of having a difficult, a difficult run, the rest of the merchants. So, you know, I I think lifting up our local artisans and keeping the flavor local and not just bringing, you know, bringing people from all over, for me, just feels like you're showing off the wares of this community and supporting the artists of this community. And additionally, you know, how do we parlay this success? You know, would you guys be open to, you know, working with downtown merchants and doing some cross pollination? Or really helping make this feel like a more cohesive small town feel?
I will, I will say that that's not lost on us, that we're a part of a bigger community. Most recently, we've had a lot of conversations about that. It's certainly a goal. You know, our goal this year as a whole is to really program the site. And we've been working closely with the Chamber of Commerce in different ways that we're able to contribute to Sebastopol. I will say that applications are open for anybody. So there's no, you know, if if somebody, if a Sebastopol maker wants to apply, they're more than welcome to do so. It's not, it doesn't exclude anyone by any means. It's just not only for Sonoma County, it's not only for Sebastopol. There are a lot of fantastic makers to be highlighted, you know, in our in our region. I I will also say that last year, we we did apply an attempt to get an expansion for Head West to have it run from Morris Street down to, you know, the intersection across from the city square and and Whole Foods. And that was denied because of needing emergency access. So that was an attempt as well to try to bridge the gap and and really get closer to that downtown core. I think naturally, when the hotel Sebastopol is built, I feel like that's going to help to create a lot more vibrancy and an easier pathway from McKinley Downtown. We're not closed off to any ideas. So, you know, we're we're not closed off, but of course, everyone's welcome to apply to be a part of Head West.
And I just have one other question. How many merchants do you actually have that sell at Head West?
It varies from market to market. The use permit has requested permission for a hundred booths.
And is that in line with what you've had in the past?
I don't think we've ever made the one hundred booth mark. So it's give, it gives us a little room for growth.
And then just my very last question actually is, you know, with growing it and and, you know, Sebastopol not really having the oversight, you know, with the police department and the fire, you know, all of that. Do you have, I know we're looking at somebody for cars, is there any security? I mean, that's a lot of extra people in our town that we're not used to policing or managing. I know you guys have done a great job because I'm right there of cleaning up afterwards. It never looks, however you do that, it's magical afterwards. It looks fantastic. But, you know, what about if there were any altercations that happened during the event? We have a very small, already strapped, you know, infrastructure here in Sebastopol. So back to infrastructure, what do you have anything in that nature in this in this plan?
So we do have a lot of Barlow staff working the event. The Head West Marketplace in itself has a manager as well that's really on the forefront of managing vendors and and customer experience. In the past, we have always had security and we've maybe had two issues that I'm ever aware of in its entirety. So there are resources that we have on hand to be able to handle situations that come up.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Questions? I did have, if you could clarify, Yolanda, could you go over the the conditions of approval numbers again? So I want to make sure I got them all.
The the ones we're hoping to be modified? Okay, item three, item nine, item twelve, item fourteen, item nineteen, and then a clarification to the hours, which wasn't a condition. I think, I think it was just written somewhere that it was eleven to five.
Yeah, we'll be discussing this and maybe staff has also some comments on it. I can tell you that with the the marketing for local, that had to do with COVID, where we didn't want to, you know, spread out too much and create more risk out in the area. But that's why originally that was there, not to be, you know, exclusive or inclusive from that standpoint.
I appreciate knowing that. Thank you.
Any, you have any comments or questions for the applicant at this point?
So I would just note that we can bring up that email from Yolanda or as we go, as we go through it after public comment.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And we may have other questions, but at this point, I'm going to bring it back and open it up for a public comment. If anyone from the public would like to comment on this project.
And Jimmy, if you'd like to make any comments, you can do so at this time as well.
Okay, thank you, Carrie, and thank you, everyone. I'm excited to bring Head West back to the Barlow and the city of Sebastopol for for the multiple years that we've been having it. It has been such an honor to be able to create accessible and affordable space for local, hyperlocal, as well as local Bay Area creatives that span across makers, crafters, designers, artists, and then also local merchants that do have brick and mortars that are looking to expand and market themselves and build a bigger clientele and shopper base. I think it's, you know, super important that, you know, diversity, inclusion and creating equity is at top of mind, I think, in any event. Especially in the Bay Area, we have such a diverse community of not only just residents, but also creatives. I think this is what makes Head West kind of stand out amongst, you know, any other events. So, you know, creating that type of equity within each marketplace is is always at top of mind and super important. And thank you, Deborah, for calling out all the safety issues and parking. I look forward to working with the Barlow and continuing the success and watching things grow and develop and progress. So again, thank you so much for this opportunity and I look forward to more years of successful community building.
Right, thank you. And Jimmy, sorry about that. I I did mean to give you a time during the applicant portion, but thank you for the information and your comments.
Thank you.
So any public comments, other public comments? Yep, okay. I don't see anybody else, so go ahead and close public comment. I think if you, I don't know if you want to just take those requests one at a time, let's just go through those. And let's start in just one second here.
I actually do have some other, a couple other questions about the condition.
Okay, why don't we do that?
So I guess this, this is somewhat related to Yolanda's and condition number three. But I'm just wondering, so I know we had a lot of discussion about Peacetime this summer and the parking and all that. And I'm just, you know, I know we had the check-in in July and assuming the rest of the summer, there was no incidents that all went well for the rest of the summer. As far as we know.
I'm sorry, you're putting me on the spot. I would need to go check their email records just to see if there were issues. I don't know, but I would, I would want to check with the police, but I don't know of any other than I did hear that the sound was much louder than it should have been from other folks in town who could hear it a long ways away. But I do know that the Peacetime is repending getting an application from them that would come before you separately.
Okay, yeah, I just was wondering about the parking situation because I know that that had been discussed a lot. And this is a similar issue with the parking, so just wanted to know what had happened. And I just had a question about, this is a condition fifteen. And this has to do with a fifty-foot buffer from green vegetation. I'm just wondering, is that, does the Barlow understand what that fifty foot is and where where is the green vegetation? Is that off on their site or is that off their site or how is that kind of defined?
Sure, there is definitely some on their site and Yolanda, I don't know if, I mean, we can certainly work with them if you want to make sure that it's delineated.
Yeah, I guess I just, you know, it's a little bit, you know, but what is considered green vegetation?
Right.
We can be green vegetation to somebody. That's probably not what we mean. So I'm just wondering, you know, how do we make sure they understand where the parking limits are?
If the commission requests, we could mark it up on a map so that it's clear.
Yeah, I I think that would be helpful just for everyone's sake, so we all know and understand kind of what.
Yeah, I I think it is marked up because we looked at it when we were looking at the parking, the first application for parking that got withdrawn some time ago. And I think there was a survey that showed what the green spaces were in that. Yes, there, yeah, we do have aerials where it would be very easy for staff to just, yeah, mark up.
Yeah, I just think that would be helpful for the, just so again, everyone kind of understands where that is. I think, I think, oh, the other question, and I just wonder if this is kind of a standard condition. That's twenty-four, which I think has to do with the the trash, you know, cleaning up the site afterwards. I mean, obviously, I think the Barlow wants them to, you know, have a clean site, but and I can understand, you know, if this was on a piece of city property, like if it was a use permit to use Oives Park or Libby Park or something, that we would have a condition that the site has to be returned to, you know, pre-conditions.
So this is standard wherever the city would have a public access easement, which we do over the Barlow streets, McKinley streets. So just to make sure that any of the cones and, you know, things like that are removed.
All right, got it. Yeah, I think that's all my other clarifications.
Okay, before we start talking some of these items, anybody else have any clarification questions of staff? I mean, you may have some as we go through these items, but anything not related to that, okay? All right, so I guess we'll start out with item number three. And just, you know, want to see where the commissioners kind of stand on that. And staff, I don't know if you have any comments about that prior to our discussion.
Yeah, I think staff overall is okay with amending that condition to what was proposed in the email from Yolanda as far as making sure that it's for the Head West event, you know, parking only.
Right, and so this would be that, you know, the Barlow should not be responsible for monitoring the farmer's market parking and things like that. It should be related to, I I agree, it should be related to the Head West customers. Or or you could generalize it just Barlow customers in general, because people may be parking there because they can't normally park in front of Taylor Lane because it's closed or that kind of thing.
Yeah, I think I think that would be good.
So are we taking the language directly from their recommendation? And could you read through that? I can do a red line of the conditions of approval for you.
Can you scroll down? Because isn't this as part where it talks about a security as well? If you go up more, it's not just the parking. Is is this just about parking or is it also having security there?
Item three is just about parking.
Okay, because I thought it said something about security.
Well, it's a professional security firm.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
So bear with me, I'm going to jump to the exhibit B. And we will try to, we'll try to modify these on the spot, but we can still continue the conversation.
So their responsibility is for signage also to say this is public over here and this is private?
No, so what is, so the Rialto, obviously, their parking lot on the south side, I believe, has signage. One of the questions that Yolanda and the Barlow had was how, so that the parking lot is is continuous from the public parking lot, which is by the peace wall across from the police station. And it sort of has that curved bit and then it throttles down. But there's a drive aisle that goes directly into the Rialto lot. And so what's public versus what's Rialto lot? And so they have requested that we stripe and mark the public parking. The city, I've talked with Public Works and other and the city manager, and we are not going to be doing that. However, we did add an additional sign. So there's already a sign that says public parking at the entry to the public lot. And then as you're going to the east, the Rialto has a sign saying Rialto parking only where their lot starts. We have placed an additional sign at that location facing the Rialto lot. So if you're coming from the Rialto lot, you can see, okay, once I go past this point, I'm now in a public parking lot. And so that, so we have just, I should say, Public Works will be posting that sign. I do know not, I don't know if they've done it yet, but they will be doing that.
I actually stopped on my way over here to check that out specifically. And there is a sign, there is a blue, you know, the blue parking signs that faces the Rialto. It's kind of behind a tree. I mean, you can see it. I was looking for it, so I did see it, but it's not super obvious. So I don't know if that's the one that just put up, but there is a sign that faces, but it's kind of behind a tree. And I, the tree is starting to leaf out and I'm just thinking if it gets leafed out more and maybe obscure it more or something, I I don't know.
I I think they were trying to utilize a dis, existing. Rather than posting another, another sign and.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Sign clutter, I probably said that's a good idea.
Yeah, no, I agree, but that is coming by, I'm like, it's kind of behind a tree, so I don't know how obvious that will be. And I I totally understand the point. I mean, the, it's unfortunately a weird situation and the Rialto has their lot. People assume that's kind of part of the Rialto lot. And there is a little bit of gray areas to what is Rialto and what is public.
Yeah, and it was a shared lot when it was developed, but that agreement has expired, I guess, many, many years ago. And so, yeah.
So, yeah, so I, but I guess, you know, to say that, I I I think that needs to be clear that the security person is only responsible for that lot and they should understand that and that they don't need to keep people out of the lot to the west. That's the city lot.
Correct. And and Yolanda, you can feel free to make sure people know that or your security guards know that.
Yes, thank you.
And again, I totally think it's reasonable that they shouldn't be chasing people out of, you know, who are parking the Rialto lot and start heading towards downtown Main Street, you know, that's not their security guard's responsibility at that point.
Um, you know, I've seen for other events, signs specifically saying, you know, this is not. you know, this is not parking for this event. And I don't know if that's, the Barlow's posted that, was that the theater?
So I believe for Peach Town, that was a requirement that that be posted. No, you know, no bother parking, um, where entered, where the Rialto lot was, just to kind of let people know. And I think, uh, Yolanda, I see your hand is raised, so I'll go to you in a sec. The, I know they had some concern about wanting to make sure that didn't blow back on the Rialto because it, you know. But I believe that was posted for the Peach Town. I don't know if that was posted for the Head West events. Yolanda, uh, why don't you go ahead?
Um, I recall that that used to be a condition of approval that we had the signage. I think it's still in here that it's a, a condition. Um, we do put out the signs. We used to put three up. Um, but that also, we didn't realize that part of the Rialto lot was public. So in this instance, I think, excuse me, in this application, I think it mentions two signs, which we believe would be the Laguna Parkway. Um, one of the Laguna Parkway entrances and the one off McKinley Street that we'd be putting a sign up that says not, you know, not for Barlow event parking. So we do
Right, no, no Barlow, Barlow parking, I think is what, but, yeah, the requirement.
Yeah, so you probably have a standard sign for that, I'm assuming for different events.
We've, we have a real, actually, we have a really ugly sign. We were talking about redoing it and making it look a little nicer. Um, so we're about to do that in time for this next event, but, um, we were never given specific language. It just says no special, no Barlow special event parking.
Yeah, I mean, I, it makes sense to keep it generic, you know, so you can use it for different things.
And, and one thing I would recommend is that it just says no Barlow parking if it's for the Rialto lot. Because whether it's a special event or they're going to one of the stores, they shouldn't be using the Barlow parking, not or the public parking, not the Rialto lot.
Okay.
And that'll just kind of, and then it'll work for everything.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Um, yeah, and it would be nice at some point, you know, to, to stripe. I know it's, you know, now I can go through and stripe it, but to have different color parking stalls would, uh, you know, even just the lines down would certainly make it a little clearer. Okay. Um, so did we, oh, and is that, uh, she also mentioned the comment about public parking at the, at the CVS, um, is there signage there?
So the CVS lot is privately owned by the CVS, so we have no right to go in there and stripe that. Um, it is, my understanding by the settlement agreement and conditions for that project, it is allowed to be used for the public. However, I don't know how much you want to encourage having to cross Highway twelve for a Barlow event from the CVS lot. I, I, I'm not sure from a safety standpoint that that should be encouraged.
It, does it say on anywhere in the lot, you know, public?
I don't think it says public parking. I'm not sure if we would be allowed to do any striping on it. Like I said, it's a but we do have it on all of our signage for where the public lots are on our website and other places where we have maps and public parking.
Okay, okay, that that's included. And regarding the, Arkin also Deborah mentioned along Morris Street, you know, there's going to be crosswalk or jaywalking. I believe the state of California changed the jaywalking law, basically just to say, you know, cross when it's safe, right? Not that if you don't use a crosswalk, that you're against the law.
Yeah, and, and in regards to that, I can note, whatever the laws are, we are just, we're more concerned about pedestrian safety than anything else. Uh, the city has identified the intersection at Laguna and Morris as a location that should have an improvement in some point. And obviously, yes, if the Barlow is doing a lot of parking down there, that enhances that need.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that. Uh, okay, so everyone okay with the modifications for item number three? And we can move on to item number nine.
So I see this as two questions. One is the objection to the director modifying the hours and the other that we should state both sequences of hours that they've asked, maybe in this paragraph.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure why. I'm not sure why this is in there unless your thought is to change the, the rules. If things go south or for emergencies or weather or floods or
Or their request, is that what, what it is?
Yeah, it's mostly so it's in there, um, for if they do request to change hours as opposed to coming back to the planning commission to change their hours of operation. It, this authorizes the planning director to change those hours. As she sees fit or as they see fit. So rather than coming back to a formal meeting, we can change those hours at a planning director or staff level as opposed to coming back to the commission, you know.
Should we maybe state that more? Because the way it's written, it almost sounds like it's almost like a punitive thing.
Yes.
Like maybe say like more positively, if the applicant would like to change the hours, the planning director has authority.
The reality is if there's a health and safety issue, like the street needs to be open on a certain week for some reason, then the city has the right to do that anyway. Uh, but the, yeah, the intent of this was to actually provide flexibility to the applicant. I'm not sure how to believe that one.
Yeah, I, I think, yes, yeah, I, I think at the applicant's request, the planning director may authorize a change of hours or something like that.
And then regarding the, the hours, um, if we just make it ten to five, that encompasses, would, would there be any problem? If we just make it ten to five and then that way they, you know, in November, December or wherever it works for them.
Good idea.
Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah, I'm coming with that.
All right. Uh, let's see, item, go ahead and finish typing there and move on to next item. Item twelve, I think is the next one. And, uh, I think we can just strike that one. And, uh, again, that was kind of for safety issues, so, uh, commissioners don't have a problem with that. My recommendation, we just strike it.
Number twelve, a safety issue? Oh, because of COVID.
Okay, we didn't want it to go too far out. I remember that discussion.
Okay, so it wasn't about restricting vendors?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with removing that.
Uh, item, uh, fourteen.
So I believe fourteen, the applicant shall be responsible to install signage informing attendees that the movie theater parking lot. Let's just say is not for Barlow parking.
Yeah.
But I, but I think they were asking the city to create that signage and to do something, I think on this particular question, that's what my notes said, and so the city is not interested in doing the signage, other than what you put up already.
Sorry, uh, Yolanda, I see your hand raised. Why don't you go ahead?
Um, I think here more just, uh, clarity that it's the private parking lot, not the entire, what appears to look like the entire movie theater parking lot.
How's that? So informing attendees that the Rialto portion of the movie theater parking lot is not for Barlow parking. Does that work?
I think that works for us. Okay, thank you.
Item nineteen, when you're ready.
Um, nineteen in there is, um, the city reserving the right to, if there's any health and safety issues or anything like that, the city does reserve the right to, um, through access or a traffic guard to ensure safety. So I think that, um,
Right, and, and this is, this is a fire, either from police or fire, and so I'm reticent to want to remove it. It is not a planning director whim. Uh, certainly, we have no intent for that, um, but if there is an issue, and obviously, we would certainly try to coordinate ahead of time if it's a known event, and if it's a emergency, I, I would stand that the city needs to have the right to do this.
Well, I mean, when, again, since the city has an easement across it, wouldn't the city naturally have a right to, to do that regardless?
But this permit is basically allowing them to close that easement to the, from public access. So this is saying, but we, but we do, even though we're granting you this permit, if something arises and we need to have through access.
So can we say, um, something about an emergency and not, because the way it's written, should the lack of through access cause traffic issues? Like if there's a backup on Highway twelve, because everyone's coming to Head West, is that a traffic issue? And now the city needs to open up the street because there's a, like, I, I think the traffic issue is, uh, I mean, there could be all kinds of traffic issues.
Yeah, so here's a scenario, one of the scenarios is if we have the Hotel Sebastopol under construction and we know Brown Street is going to be closed for a while, but if they need to close another street and we need the street, this we need all of McKinley open for public access for some reason. Again, that's not going to be an emergency. We would know about it ahead of time, but it may be a couple of months ahead of time, but in the middle of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, so I see what you're saying, it's special circumstances beyond which we really can't control.
Right, we don't, we don't know what's going to happen with future permitting or with, yeah.
But I mean, we can control those other things. I mean, if the, if the Hotel Sebastopol is doing construction and they need to do utility work in the street and we have to close the street off and that street off to do that work. Can we say, can you not do it the second weekend of the month? Because the Head West event happens the second weekend of the month. It seems like that could be, and that's, that's an impact on the Hotel Sebastopol construction. I mean, they have to deal with that. Like, I don't think that they should be able to put out other already planned events in order to accommodate their construction schedule. I think that kind of thing needs to be, you know, again, they, the
Let me, let me change that to PG&E is coming in to do upgrades to it, and we don't really have a lot of control over what. You know, I'm not talking, and, and that was maybe a bad, a poor example. Again, we're not going to do this lightly if this is not a planning director whim or, or a police chief or a fire chief whim, frankly. It would be for public safety, um, for needed events only.
So I guess can we, can we change the language then to some kind of public safety or emergency situation and not traffic issues?
When we say traffic safety issue, traffic or traffic safety?
Just how about through, through access to ensure safety? Because as soon as you say put the traffic guard in there and traffic issues. It's not really the traffic, it's the situation of having to close streets for a particular reason. Well, it, maybe they'll understand why this is here now and not complain about it. As with some of the other situations.
And I guess it's just, I don't know if it also needs to be on there of his comments. I mean, if there is an issue with that, I'm assuming you would contact the Barlow and maybe they might have the night, oh, well, why don't we just do it this way or is this going to help type deal? Um, you know, I think Barlow's probably picturing that all of a sudden you decide and it's okay, we're going to start traffic going through there. I mean, it's something that will be discussed.
Yeah, this is not going to happen. Like all of a sudden on a Friday, we call Yolanda and we say, hey, by the way, you got to have a traffic guard because we're going to have people coming through. It, it is definitely, it's more the, the ability to modify.
Yeah.
The approval if we foresee something that is needed. And, but I'm happy to say cause safety issues instead of traffic issues. Does that help?
Yeah.
Paul?
Yeah, I guess that's better. I mean, I, I, yeah, I just don't like the traffic because that just, you know, anyone can complain about traffic and everyone does complain about traffic. And I don't want, uh, you know, someone to complain about traffic and the city says, okay, we need to change this because people are complaining about traffic situations in town. And I think it has to be a, you know, a security or safety or emergency issue that would require shutting this event down, because that's kind of what we're talking about. If, if we need access on McKinley Street, you know, it kind of shuts the event down because that's where the, most of the event happens and you can't like Yolanda said, it wouldn't be safe to have the event happening and through access happening on McKinley at the same time, so. Yeah, I just want to make sure it's not, yeah, and I get that the intent is that it's not a whim, but I want to make sure that the language in the condition ensures that it's not a whim.
Right, and I do see Yolanda's hand up. And just a note, I, I just made you co-chair because when I am modifying the conditions, I cannot see who has their hands up. So if you could, I, I just gave you so permission, so you will see hands up and feel free to call on people.
Right, okay, uh, Yolanda, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I do, I do feel like just clarification around what that means. I feel like in a year, we might not remember and we just want to be really clear. Um, I would ask maybe if it could be phrased as um, emergency issues, um, or maybe emergency issues outside of either party's control or something, only because safety could also mean a thousand different things, just like I feel like traffic could mean a thousand different things. We just want to be really clear because for what, what that means for us is that we're not having an event and we have to cancel it. We wouldn't ever have an event that's going to have traffic running through it. It just wouldn't work, so, um, you know, any extra clarification, just really trying to encompass the true intention, um, would be fantastic. And, and for me, what that is, is emergency issues outside of our control.
I like the outside of control.
Well, I, I guess the concern I have is if it's not an emergency, like a PG&E is coming in to close or Caltrans is doing some work on one sixteen where it's going to be an issue, it's not an emergency. It, it is beyond our control, right? Uh, but it's not an emergency necessarily if Caltrans is, so like, for instance, Caltrans will be doing some intersection approve, improvements and reconstruction at the intersection of Petaluma and McKinley, and I don't know how that might affect this project. Um, that is not something that I, I mean, I'm not in the engineering department, I'm not in the police department, I'm not in the fire department. I will say this is fairly typical when someone has an easement over something to not just completely give up the rights in case they need the use of that easement. And I think that's what's, what we're trying to ask for in this case.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we just, I don't know, the wording can be, I understand what you're trying to say there. Just trying to get to the right wording. Be specific, but.
And I'm happy to put in the, the city will, you know, if such occurs, the city will work with the Barlow to provide advance notice or something like that. So it's obvious that we're, we're not doing this, other than there's some logistical reason why we need to make sure there's access to a street that we have a public access easement on.
Great, yeah, I would like that. And then when you're, uh, done with that change, maybe we can put that back on so we can see how that looks. I don't see any other hands raised.
I'm used to two monitors, this is
We have to get you another one.
Need a second laptop. Okay, so here, uh, changing it to, um, should the lack of through access cause safety issues, not traffic? The city reserves the right to require through access and or a traffic guard to ensure safety. The city will work with the Barlow to provide advanced notice if possible in, uh, I don't know how to trail that. Any, any other words, anything would be appreciated.
Oh, did you mention something about out of the call? Any idea how you might want that worded?
Yeah, no. I don't know, I, I mean, I understand the intent. I'm just trying to, I, I don't quite know what the right language is. Myself, I, I share Yolanda's concerns about safety is a little bit vague like traffic.
And just know that the minutes for this meeting constitute part of the public record, should we need to go back and look at that.
Or, you know, the access cause, um, unavoidable.
With health and safety issues, I mean, that
Yeah.
But I mean, it's health, health issues would be a potential, hey, you know, there's something going on, like a closure of another intersection where we need to maintain fire access. Uh, or something like that, that would be a health and safety issue.
Would it be something that the fire department or police would declare that to be the issue or how would, how would that
Yeah, I'm not going to get, this is not my condition. Like I said, this is a police, uh, either a fire department or a police department.
Add in there or? And I'm talking, what did you say?
So, so maybe add in there as per fire or police.
Public safety personnel.
Personnel, um.
Yeah, maybe should the lack of through access, um.
Well, we could say should. Uh, public safety personnel determine that the lack of through access is causing a safety issue that way. It's clear who the determinator. Or who is determining it.
And or outside or well determination or. I guess you would determine if it was an outside thing like.
Yeah, that would still, we would still, like, for instance, we actually had a prod, delivery project. Requested to close Burnett Street. Um, for a couple of months and or make it just one way and we met out there with police and fire and the city engineer as well. As, because he's responsible for traffic safety as well. Um, and you know, planning, we were more or less there as observers or kind of. We were there from a, hey, you know, if you do that, you, here's what's gonna hap, what's likely to happen with the traffic patterns, but it was really the fire department's call and the. And the city engineers call.
But it should be maybe worded not that. Uh, should they determine that there's a lack of through access that causes that, but that should they determine? That they require through access and or traffic guard to ensure.
Okay, so I'll read that um as written and hopefully we're not just making this a monster of a condition. Should public safety personnel determine that through access is needed? Due to health and safety issues, the city reserves the right to require through access and or a traffic guard to ensure safety. The city will work with the Barlow to provide advanced notice if possible if this arises.
Uh, is that, oh, that's on to you, Yolanda.
I thought you said Linda. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, I, I think it, I thank you for, for making the change. Um, I. I feel like it's in a much better place. Um, so thank you for that.
And then the other thing she had mentioned was ours, but I think we addressed that. Um, prior there, so I think we're good with that. Okay, um, any other comments, questions uh from commission?
Can I ask a, a general question of staff? So I, I know we usually have done these annually. Now we're doing this for the next two years. Is there, um, I'm sorry, what kind of what the standard is around that? Now we've seen it going for a couple of years. We think it's okay, so we feel like a two-year. Permit is. You know, reasonable at this point or?
Yes, so the city has granted temporary use permits that are longer than one uh, one year, not. Usually for things that are uh events such as this or Peace Town or uh things like that. Um, you, the ones we have done are like the RV Village and the Micro Shelter and the, the can uh. Can recycling station where they're more fixed. Um. However, I don't, I'm gonna look to John as well, but I, with this particular one. Especially with condition nineteen in there, because so like, say next year, there is a need for through access because of construction throughout town. It's not really fair to. You know, have a public access blocked and effect, and you know, there, there's a certain weighing of stuff and we could always come back to the commission if we needed to. Um, but outside of that logistical component of it is, it is a street in our street network. Um, and, and how is that working? We haven't seen any major problems to this date with the head west folks, so I think. From that perspective, I mean, I think the parking is the major thing and. Um, these are the conditions that were worked out for Peace Town and that seemed to end a little bit more peacefully than it started.
And helps them plan also if you have two years.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't, I don't, so I don't see an issue with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally happy with it. Like, I think it's, you know, kind of crazy that. Kind of ongoing events may even come back every year. It just seems like a lot of work for you guys and for, takes up our time and everything too, and I totally. Agree, I'm just wondering what the mechanism or the reasoning kind of behind.
Yeah, yeah, so the city has determined and the city council through various appeals that all, has also weighed in that temporary events can be longer than one year.
Right, thank you.
Okay, uh, anybody want to make a motion?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. With that said. Can we do three years? Is it too late to ask for that? What is the, what is the max? This is, it's um. It's a lot of work and it costs a lot of money to come back every time.
So I would note that in two years' time, the Hotel Sebastopol may be open and situations in, in town may have changed, so. And I know the Barlow Hotel has a proposal in and I do know that one of the requirements for that will certainly be. Um, traffic. Implications, so. I would recommend two years is certainly gives. A break from having to reapply. Um, I will note that, you know, uh, as we just reviewed, many of these conditions of approval are consistent. And so it's really just being able to, the commission and staff being able to reassess. Whatever the current conditions in town are. Um, so while it is possible to uh approve for longer, I think staff at this point would. Just given the hotel opening in a couple of years' time, would ask that we leave it at the two years for now.
And when, when can they come and apply? To extend that? I mean, is, can they, you know, at the end of year one, can they come back and say, hey, we want to go ahead and extend it? Another two years or there's already a year, but add another year.
Yeah, there's no need to wait until there, this permit has expired in two years' time. They could come. You know, in the middle of. Whatever that is, twenty twenty four and say, hey, you know, I, we'll at least know more about the Hotel Sebastopol. And the Barlow's hotel application and a number of other items at that time.
Okay. I'm sorry, I do have one other question about, this is condition eighteen. Um, applicant show place uh know through access signs at the entrance of the private parking lots off Laguna Parkway and Sebastopol Avenue. As part of the setup, so what, what is that? So is that all of the parking lots on Sebastopol Avenue like? The Gravincene Station and the.
No, that is related to the um. Like. Yolanda, where would you call this? The community market, like people who are coming in there need to know that it's not through because it's normally through. And we don't want people having to come in there and then having to figure out how to turn around.
God, I thought it was like. All those live because quite, not quite understanding what that was referring to. So it's just the Barlow parking lots that are. Got it, okay.
Okay, and uh, and Yolanda, you got that information that you could maybe. Come a little earlier to, to apply for additional time instead of waiting until it expires, if that helps you.
Yes, thank you. And I, I did really quickly want to note, we've, we've always put up a know-through-access on Laguna Parkway since it is. Um, much narrower and there is no turnaround. We've actually, that I'm aware of, we've never been required to put one on Sebastopol Avenue. Since the parking lot does make a loop. Um. Is that? Uh, is, it looks like that is a requirement for this condition. I think I missed that.
Yeah, it's because it says um. Park, private parking lots off Laguna Parkway and Sebastopol Avenue.
Should we be specific on those or?
But that's why I think Yolanda wants to get rid of the Sebastopol Avenue one, because that is not a dead-end parking lot. It does move around.
And maybe clarify the one on Laguna Parkway's leads into Pink Lady Court because we actually have two other entrances that are just normal parking.
I guess they agree.
So, okay, so I was, I was confused and so is everybody else, I guess. So does that make sense? The um, the Pink Lady Court access off Laguna Parkway?
Right, that, that absolutely makes, so yeah, I'm saying uh, the, the private parking lot off of. Laguna Parkway at Pink Lady Court and that is, we don't want people coming down Pink Lady Court because they're gonna get stuck.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and I personally am, John, are you okay if we delete the Sebastopol Avenue? Because I think that's. Um, and Yolanda, I'm assuming you coordinate with all of your tenants, including the community market who may or may not want people parking there for Barlow events. Um, but if you, if you all are fine with your tenants, I'm fine deleting the Sebastopol Avenue. Um, signage. Because it's all Barlow property.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, great, thank you. Um, and with that, I will be, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this uh use permit. For the head west marketplace at the Barlow.
The motion.
Yeah, with the changes that we've discussed and Carrie has amended as we spoke tonight.
Okay, uh.
And can Debbie, if we can just get a second on that now that Paul's done the full motion.
Oh, sorry. I will second that motion.
For the record.
Okay. Uh, if there's no further discussion, then go ahead and pop it up.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Ottinger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fritz?
Yes.
And Chair Fernandez?
Hi.
Uh, motion passes five zero.
Okay, great, and thank you Carrie and John for. Noting on tennis, it was great to do it uh on the fly and I think that helps a lot. Well, thank you. All right, well, uh. Give me Yolanda, good luck and uh looking forward to, to supporting the event.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Okay, good night.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Bye.
Okay, let's move on to item six, regular gender line, which there are none, so go on to subcommittee updates if there's any. Anyone who wants to report any update to subcommittees. Don't think there are at this point, okay, and let's go on to planning directors report.
Uh, thank you, uh commissioners. I will keep it brief. Um. But let's see what's going on. Um, just an update on the Woodmark project. Um, I know this is of interest to our last group, the DRB. Uh, the Woodmark project, we just approved yesterday their last document as part of their building permit set. Which was their tree protection permit uh or plan. Um, they, so they're buttoning up the final documents for building and grading permits. Um. They, we've already had a construction management meeting, talking with them about their truck routes. Uh, and they've been very cooperative on that in terms of. Rather than going, you know, taking a left and going through the plaza and one sixteen. And to go north, they will be going right out to Regal, up to Mill Station to one sixteen to try to keep them out of town. Uh, this is the construction management part, sort of for the last hearing that we discussed that, you know, you can't always, you don't always know what's gonna happen, but. Um, but they've been very cooperative on that. Um, they are likely to start construction mid-April, uh, mid to late April, so that project is um. Being built in phases, uh, phase one that they'll be proceeding with first is a forty-eight unit, uh, which is the. Four buildings towards the front of the site. Yeah, four buildings. Uh, and then the second phase is three buildings with thirty-six units at, towards the rear. The, the initial has the forty-eight units as well as the community. Center in the playground area. Um, and then the sidewalk, frontage improvements, all that kind of stuff. Um, they, um. I won't do into too many details since this body never reviewed the project, um, but there will be frontage improvements and new sidewalks. And the city is installing um a rapid beacon. Crosswalk crossing um on the west side uh to get from Robinson to across Bodega to the north side of Bodega. Uh, so the west side of that intersection, so, which is also the entry to that project. Um, the Hotel Sebastopol, as we just talked about, they have pulled their, pulled their building permits. They just submitted their encroachment permit to Caltrans for all of the work that's along one sixteen. Um, and they um. They are waiting from, for some approval from the feds on their archaeology plan. That's their first thing they need to do before they get started, so. And obviously for archaeology, you can't do archaeology in this weather anyway because of the, the, the rain, so. Um, they will hopefully be starting soon though. Um, I know our building department has granted them an extension due to the weather-related and the archaeology beyond their. Control. Um, but they are anxious to get go on as evidence by putting together a huge Caltrans encroachment permit. Um, in other news, the uh, the designer review board today did approve uh with condition seven, seven, one. First street, there is the variance that will be pending with the planning commission and obviously that approval would be planning, uh, pending. Um, the, the planning commission hearing, the variance uh for that, uh, which will be at our next hearing on April eleventh. Um. The, uh, and then in terms of city council next week, we don't have a lot of items. We have the second reading for the zoning amendment. For the cannabis, uh, manufacturing cannabis delivery only permits. Um, John, I don't know if you want to say anything about the discussion um from, at council for that, for folks.
I think um overall, they appreciated the planning commission and staff's um input overall in that. That process of having the study session first to provide, you know, guidance for staff. Um, to. Um, give that proposed ordinance to city council, so. I just want to thank commissioners uh for that. And um, yeah, as Carrie mentioned, the next uh city council meeting, they'll have their second reading of that. And. And the one change was the um operational hours changing to, I believe it was nine AM to ten PM. Uh, for the delivery only aspect. Um. They weren't real comfortable with the state standards that were mentioned um in the proposed ordinance.
Right, and the state hours would have been, I think, six AM to ten PM, so it was really just the morning and the applicant was like, yeah, I ain't getting it at six AM anyways.
Mission uh liaison for the council meeting, if you have any further comments, you know. Uh, you can welcome to do that.
Linda, do you have any? Yep.
Um. They didn't need me to um chime in. Um, I thought it went, I thought there were some good questions asked by city council. But overall. You know, as we um. Supported, supported it wholeheartedly, they pretty much did as well. So they didn't. Now, I was ready to talk a little bit about the history of the ordinance and. The one question they brought up was why, when we created the ordinance originally, didn't we include? Um, the industrial zones and Carrie, I thought, did a very good answer, right? Not just. Just dumb, you know, speaking to um what she thought probably was going on. So uh, it was pretty close to that. And I personally don't quite remember why we excluded, you know, the industrial areas. Um, so. But, you know, things need to update and. Think we're all, I think it worked fine.
Great, thank you for, for uh attending that.
Uh, and yes, thank you, Linda, for that. Um, and we did also have a report out from the fire chief on the fire services. Um, work that the ad hoc group is doing at that meeting. Um, at our, the next meeting, uh, the twenty-first uh for city council, there will also be a. Uh, the parklet guidelines will be going to the city council. Um, peaceful nominees for this year. Um, and then. Um, I believe the. There's a couple of pedestrian improvements um that the engineering department has gotten money, uh, grant boards for. I think one is uh crossing near Annaly. Um, that will be coming to the planning commission also at your next meeting for general plan. Consistency uh review, um, so that will be coming up, but if you're interested. Um, there will be a report to council next Tuesday as well, but um, we'll be at your next meeting to. And, and the city engineer will be at the next meeting to discuss that as well. Um, and I don't remember what else is on there. There were, there were a couple of other items. I believe there was one related to the AmeriCorps Trail as well. Uh, that is getting ready to go out for bid. Um. And then the Ivors Park Pathway Project is also getting close to being out to bids, that work can be done outside of the Little League Hours and outside of. Um, the big, but within this, you know, not wet season, so. Um, so those are, that's sort of.
Was, was there something also about Palm Avenue? They were gonna do some repairs and.
Yes, there, the, the Palm Avenue project did not go through the normal CIP pro, process. It is something that came up, I believe, by the former police chief. Uh, concerned about traffic safety and making it one way and his idea in the last city engineers was just to stripe it. Asked that, but when you look at the requirements. When you get into improvements to public streets, you have to do them in a certain way that they include ADA and other things. And it became a very, very expensive project for what that was. Uh, the new police chief did not feel that that was. The project was entirely necessary and so they did uh decide not to fund it at this time, but, you know, hold it as something that could. I believe they held it as something that could go through the regular CIP process.
It's not gonna be repaved or anything or?
I don't. I don't believe so. And I apologize.
Yeah. So we're talking about the commissioners of between Petaluma Avenue. And Hillsburg Avenue, oh, wait. Main Street, yeah, that portion right there, but the worst street in town. I tried to write it.
As as one of my former professors said, you know. Rugged streets slow people down.
There you go. Natural speed bump.
Um, and so I think that is it for the planning director report unless there are questions.
Questions for a playing director at this point. Okay, great. Thank you for that. And it's like I. Uh, meeting will be adjourned then to our next meeting of April eleventh, twenty twenty three at six PM, uh, not seven PM. So if you are on out, it's going to be six PM. So. Thank you.